Okay, go ahead Joe, let's do it.
All right, Finance Committee meeting for April 12th will start today. We're gonna talk about budgets for five different departments, Clerk of the District Court, Veterans, Geographical Information Systems, Adult Probation, and Board of Equalization. We're gonna start out with Clerk of the District Court before I turn it over to John, a brief summary of the current year and how they're tracking. They have forty-seven employees budgeted for their office. The latest budget is three million, twelve thousand, three eighty-one. And how they're tracking, they're about sixty-eight percent spent at seventy-seven percent of the year complete, which leads, we don't believe you'll be needing any sort of supplement?
No.
Okay, good. They have projected revenue that they receive through different grants and federal monies of about a million and a half. And of their three million dollar budget, two point six million is payroll, so it's mainly a personnel-driven budget. And with that, I will let John Friend talk about the details of their budget for next fiscal year.
We are going to be just slightly under our target, four dollars actually, under our target. We're good. We're gonna lose a couple of positions, we gave back a few. Every time somebody leaves, we analyze that process and that position to see if we can be more efficient, and we've done so over the last several years, starting from sixty employees down to forty-seven. As we use technology to enhance our capabilities to put things online and continue to promote e-filing, possibility certainly does exist that we will look at positions as we leave to consolidate those into other existing operations within our budget. So we'll see how that works out. But that's where we're at right now.
Very good. And you know, John has a trend of always coming in at at or below budget and not asking for supplements, so...
And we wait till the very end until we purchase any office supplies, just to make sure.
But you don't like go crazy, do you?
No.
You might have come for those four dollars.
Yeah.
But one question I have for you, John, is that, you know, you guys have been able to kinda upgrade your area and do a remodeling and things like that, and you've always been able to do it within the context of your budget, where there's other departments that come in front of us and anytime they wanna do some work to their department or any physical modifications to it, they're always coming in for a budget supplement. So, you know, what's your kind of secret to how you guys...
A lot of it is, if we, as we do that analysis, if someone leaves, A, you hire somebody at the lower rate, somebody been here thirty-five years, hire somebody at a lower rank, lower level, and so we're able to have that money to be able to spend on those. In addition to that, when people do leave, I might wait four or five months and leave that position open and save that money for remodeling.
Yeah.
Does it sting? Does more people have to work harder? Do they have to adjust their lunches? Yes, but that's pretty much how we do it.
Yeah, which is great, which is great.
You, when you, did I hear right, do you have sixty employees or fifty employees?
Used to have sixty, now we're down to forty-seven, with a couple openings.
All right. I mean, I think your approach to this is excellent, to say the least, and I'd like to see your, you know, philosophy transferred to other directors, maybe that's time for us, or elected officials rather. It might not be a bad idea to ask you if you would, make a presentation to them about how you do it. I mean, you've obviously been successful, and some of the others are just adamant, I think, about numbers, including our office. You know, that we have to have people come in and do things, and sometimes I don't necessarily think we need all the employees that we have, to be true. So, that's my opinion, but, yeah. I'll go downstairs and my office will be vacant. Where's my furniture?
You told us to get rid of it.
Yeah. Boy, I'm supposed to be the comedian.
Should we go back to the five-member board?
Pardon me?
Should we go back to the five-member county board?
If I can be in charge of the district.
Yeah, who picks the two that leave?
I get to pick. Mary Ann, oh no. No, I'm serious about that, though, I think it's, it'd be, your experience has been very valuable, and I think, yeah, I'd like to see you do something with that. Would you consider that?
Um...
Are you, is it awkward or what?
That would be very, very awkward.
Well, I mean, I think it'd be informational, if you could do this instead, if you could maybe summarize it and put it in writing directed to us about how you manage...
That would be terribly awkward.
Really?
Yes, absolutely.
But I mean, it's so sensible.
Well, you have people that have a lot more management experience than I do in this, in a lot of different areas, and then you go to elected officials, and John Friend's gonna try to have them dictate how their budget's spent, or give them input or feedback on possible cost savings.
Don't know how they oughta do it.
What? Of course, that's okay, you can all do it, that's fine.
I could do it for the county board, though.
That's what I was... Do it for the county board.
John, you know, I've been lucky enough to be on the finance, the finance for five years. You have always done a very outstanding job, I mean that, you know that.
We're committed not to coming back here for extra money.
Now, the question I have, you're at sixty-seven percent roughly, sixty-eight or seventy...
Like I said, there's a lot of money that we'll end up spending towards the end of the year, but we wait just to make sure that there's something that doesn't come up that I haven't been able to budget for. Here's an example, we have a lot of electreivers, there's thirty-five grand apiece to replace one, I probably have fifteen, I don't know how many, there's quite a few down there, isn't there Matt? If you, if one breaks, that's, I can keep records in those, probably, instead, you could, you could stack it up on, and I might have six months' worth of records, I could put two years' worth of records. It's one of those electric things that you push the button and it comes up. We're gonna end up trying to get out of that business in the future, but if, if I stay in the business, which is currently our practice, to be able to keep all open cases in the office so people can come in, look at the record, instead of calling and getting it down out of the basement, which takes anywhere from a day or four hours, depending upon when they call us to ask for it. So I need to save money to continue to replace those, and they're about fifteen, twenty years old, a lot of them are end of life. In addition to that, that's why we're holding those two positions open, trying to save money in case something like that does happen, but basically, to answer your question, we try to save as much money as we can, then by office supplies, then by things that we're gonna need to try to transition over into the next budget year.
Try to keep the dry cleaning, would you?
Yeah. Our costs are going up too, because we have e-filing, and we're not a paperless court, so as they e-file things on the computer, we need to print that out and put it in a file, because we need to have the file for folks to look at and use, so, and that's gonna get worse.
Commissioner Burgerson?
So, are you budgeting for that stuff, either in the budget, or, and then I guess in the second question...
Well, I have an office supplies and a contract, we pay the contract to have them come in and look those over, you know, a repair contract company that comes in and looks those over, and if the change gets loose, they adjust it, things like that, but not to purchase a new one, I have not put that in the budget.
So, you're basically either spending at the end or encumbering?
Mm-hmm.
And do we know what the encumbrance amounts are?
Um, I can get that.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, I think we're set. Thank you very much, good job. And we take this presentation to the other elected officials. Thanks, everybody.
So next, we'll do Veterans Allen. So Allen Jackson's here, he's gonna present before I let him go over his budget, I'll just, summary of where they are year-to-date. They have six employees budgeted, their current budget is about five hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Their seventy-four point four percent spent at seventy-seven point three, which leads me to believe you're not looking for a supplement this year, you're thinking of coming on budget, which was good. They don't receive any outside revenue, and their budget payroll is three hundred and twenty-six thousand out of the five-eleven, so it's the majority of it. They have a history...
What was that again, three what?
Three twenty-six out of five-eleven.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I got it.
So, you know, they have a history of not needing supplements and coming in on budget and, you know, running a fairly tight ship, and we're always, you know, knowing what they spend their money on, this is always something that we wish we had more money to give to them, but given our fiscal constraints, always makes it tough. And with that, I'll turn it over to Allen.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Allen Jackson, Veterans Office. Like I said, we are a small office, so six. Out of the six, five of them are prior veterans, and our budget really does not change on a yearly basis. Majority of our funds are based on our payroll. One of the things, just to let you know, we just completed our required training for the year last week, so the office is now fully accredited and certified with the state and the federal VA. Any additional training that we will have to do for the rest of the year, with our accreditation, we are now allowed to do web training, so that cuts down on any travel that we have to do to go out and meet any more requirements. And with that, with that training, that allows us to do web training with the VFW, American Legion, and that DAV, Vietnam Veterans of America, as of today. So, once again, that cuts down on our funds. Prior to that, if we did not meet the requirement, we were allowed to attend national training, and this year's national training is in South Carolina. I would've had to send five out of the office to that training, and it's a week training. So, once again, we have met the requirement for this year.
Any questions? I'd like to ask you, is there, are there any other agencies such as yours that receive any state or federal funds, or any kind of funding from anywhere? What is your, do you have those funds now?
Our funds that we receive come from the county.
Yeah.
There are different programs that are available for us to go after.
Okay.
One is through the Department of Veteran Affairs, State Nebraska Veteran Affairs. They have a program called Nebraska Veterans Aid Fund. That allows us to request financial aid for veterans, dependents, and that covers anything from rent, utilities, food, medical, burial, also a little bit of auto repair, if someone needs new tires to get back and forth to work. That's a program they just started up. One of the things that is nice about that, that we found out at our training last week, there was an individual that his car cut on fire after an accident. The fund bought the individual a new car, and the max they're looking at is twenty-five hundred dollars. So that allowed the individual to get back and forth to work without missing any tire. We use that fund on a regular basis. As up to now, we're up to about, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have used from that fund.
From the state?
From the state.
That's the Veterans Affairs?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. The, your budget is about this, five hundred and eleven, and the payroll's three twenty-three, so it's about a hundred and seventy-four thousand or so, thinking between that and that, that's, what does that spend on?
Uh, that goes towards the fringe benefits dot com.
Oh, fringe benefits?
Right.
For the employees?
Correct.
Okay. Does any go to services for the vets?
Uh, what we use, we have another fund, which by the screen here, the six-five-six account, which is county financial aid. Currently, our budget is seventeen thousand for that fund. As of the end of March, we only use just over six thousand, because we're using the state fund more on a regular basis.
Okay.
What is not on there is, yesterday I just paid headstones fee paid to Mount Hope. You know, that is a requirement that we take care of if a setting fee comes in for a veteran.
Okay, the new cemetery will be in Sarpy, but I, we'll have some responsibility for headstones there as well, won't you?
No, sir.
All federal?
Anytime there is a service there at the new cemetery, once the veteran passes through that gate, everything is taken care of.
Okay. Well, let me ask you, is there, is there something that you need to do for veterans that you're not able to do because of funding?
There, we, there's other sources of funding that we go after.
Okay.
And, you know, since I have been there, based on our budget, we have had plenty of funds available to take care of our veterans.
That's good, and that's important. Mr. Kavanaugh?
Mr. Jackson, I think, last year you talked a little bit about the Veterans Aid Fund as well. The, the fund itself, the entire fund, is how much?
Um, as of last week, we informed, it's close to about six million dollars.
Okay. And my notes from last year indicate that we might've received five hundred thousand last year, is that something right?
Correct, five hundred thousand, the financial aid towards the county.
Okay, and we're about halfway there this year, is that what I'm...
That is correct.
Will we probably hit about that same target?
It's really hard to say, once they come in the office and we sit down, then the application process depends on the interview, what they're actually asking for and what we can help out with.
I think the last four years' numbers that you had when you talked to us last year were for 2014, where the office had served forty-five to fifty thousand veterans in 2014. For 2015, do you have an estimate of how many veterans were served?
The estimate we have right now is right about thirty-two thousand.
For the, for the calendar year of 2015?
Yeah, that's correct. And that, since we're so close to the VA hospital, we get a lot of referrals that we cannot actually assist a veteran because they're from another state, another county. So, and a lot, with the VA, since we're so close, they would tell them to come see us, and then we'll give them direction on where to go from there.
There's been activity in the legislature last year, this year, relative to expanding veteran services at the state level.
Correct.
Are you, are you aware of how that will impact your operations going forward, if at all?
Very little. We're looking at any changes, basically our levels are gonna be about the same, because we are working on going as paperless as possible. And a lot of that is the different programs that are now being established that will allow the veterans to do applications from home, and then the applications will come into the system, and then we'll look at them, see if there's any additional information, if there is. Then we can either respond to them by email, or set up in-person and go over the paperwork, which we are slowly progressing to that point now, so...
So, the initiatives that have been discussed relative to a specific veterans' court, are you familiar with those discussions that have been going on?
I have heard of it, but we're not really part of it, the court itself. We're more working with Douglas County Corrections, going over, talking to the vets, see who's eligible for benefits, who's not, and if they are not, then we're working with them, trying to get their discharge upgraded to be under honorable condition. If not, then we're referring them to so many other agencies that are involved in a program like that.
So that activity that we're doing at Douglas County Corrections, specifically related to upgrading discharge status, how long have we been doing that?
Well, we, we've been doing that from day one, since our office was open.
Right.
But this is really the first time we're actually going out to Corrections and talking with them. Our hands are sort of tied, because there's a lot of things with the VA, we can't do anything unless they have under honorable condition.
Right.
So, if we're, you know, not able to help them, then there's the other agencies that are involved, and we're talking with them. At Ease Program through Lutheran Family Services, they're providing the medical support, and so is a lot of the VA peer specialists are involved in that.
Well, I mean, the potential for realizing savings to us if someone goes from other than honorable discharge and they're serving time in our correctional center, to an honorable discharge, which would enhance their employability once they get out.
Correct.
And enhance their ability not to return to our correctional facility. So those particular individuals that your office is dealing with, it might be helpful to us if we can track that number a little bit, and we can see that, you know, we got five or ten folks upgraded from whatever.
Right.
And then it would allow us maybe to track that over time, to see if they had a recidivism rate that was less than the average, you know, that would actually save the county some money on incarcerating them, and turn them into a, you know, a tax-paying individual.
Currently, I packaged a request for military information on 25 this morning, and sent that package down to St. Louis requesting their military records, so we can work from there.
Thanks, you do a great job.
And just also, we are also now been asked to get involved with OCC, also in the same situation that we're doing with Douglas County Corrections.
And OCC is state?
Omaha Corrections Out by the Airport.
Okay. Do you work with survivors?
Yes, we have.
Any other questions?
Are you, are you gonna be able to do this at OCC? I mean, do you have the staff and wherewithal to do what they're asking?
Yep.
Cool.
We're, like I said, we're all prior military, you know, we make the time. We're sort of a brotherhood, if you wanna call it. If anytime a veteran calls us up and they say, can you help me out? And that's how, you know, I was out of the office for three months, and I come back, and I had a couple emails from a couple of the veterans and mothers that are out at CC, and they asked me, could I talk to them? So I'm scheduled to go out there on the 21st. They have a veterans' club out at OCC, and Sandra Miller from the VA, that is, the VA is Justice Outreach, and it was the same process like with DCC, I had to go through the security check and everything. They completed that, and they called me up yesterday and told me that, you're cleared to come out and visit us. And I just told them, I said, I hope, you know, you let me leave when I want you.
Right.
Walk out.
They'll let you leave from here when you want to.
But no, our, anytime, anytime it comes down to the budget, you know, we're just happy that you don't take no money away from us. And like it was mentioned, with clerk, you know, the courts and all, we sorta hold on to our money till they get a lot of heart of the year, and if we do, then we buy a few supplies, but we don't buy that much.
Any other questions or comments? Well, on behalf of the county board, thank you for your efforts and for your service, and also for what you're doing to treat the veterans well, that's very important to all of us.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate the county board's support of our...
So you have a...
Thanks, Mr. Jackson.
Thanks, Mr. Jackson. Thank you, good job.
Okay, you know, Mr. Jackson, sometime we might even have you come to a county board meeting and just talk about what the county's doing for veterans.
Okay.
We might line that up.
That'd be great.
Yeah, really, because I don't think people realize, you know, they think the only one involved is federal government, so, so we'll line that up, Karen, keep that in mind or Catherine, and we'll do that sometime in the months ahead, no urgency, but might be nice to do. I don't think people realize that. Thank you so much. We will let you know, it's your convenience, but if that isn't convenient, you tell us when you want.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
We'll do that. All right, moving on, next we're gonna do geographical information systems. I'll give a brief update, then I'll turn it over to Mike. The, the separate county department has four employees, their current budget is a little over three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Year-to-date, they're eighty-two percent spent at seventy-seven point three percent year complete, so I looked at it, is that timing?
That's timing.
So, no supplement, that's timing, which is a good thing.
Thanks.
These guys get a lot of revenue from different grants in the city of Omaha for services provided, so that their projected revenue is, you know, almost equal to what their expenses are, and within their total budget, close to three hundred thousand of the three hundred and eighty thousand is...
Where's that, where are you reading from? This, as your income? Oh, okay, got it, sorry.
Okay, and like I said, their payroll makes up the majority of their budget, three hundred thousand of the three hundred and eighty thousand. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
And the rest of the expenses, that's for me. I have the same trouble, so don't worry about it, trying to get in. I know. Okay, I have a handout that hopefully most of you have, these slides here, I'll whiz through them. Mike Shonlaw, GIS coordinator for the GIS department, thank you, good morning. I wanted to give just a quick background, I always do this, because not everyone knows what GIS is, so I always have a slide telling us what we do, and so, basically, we provide services, GIS services to city and county departments, those services listed there, work with data, maps, websites, mobile apps, and things like that. We also do project management, training, administration of software, and those types of things, so, a lot of different activities, all based, map-based, so, a lot of different things we do. I wanted to point out a couple of highlights recent, that I think sometimes it's difficult for us to translate the benefits of what we do, not all, it's not always a very direct, there's not always a bottom line, but a couple of things recently we did, we added some information to our public mapping website that directly resulted in a sale shortly thereafter of over fifty tax leads that the county holds, which is ten thousand dollars plus in back taxes and that going forward, so, it was a little thing, but it was an example of, sometimes we are able to do things like this that make a big impact to the public, in this case, Habitat for Humanity was really, really pleased about that capability, and we're gonna expand that to look at helping the city with some of their properties, but also with the Canon Treasure, to see if we need more to at least advertise these properties in a better fashion, so... Excuse me, how do you do, you find vacant lots or property or something, I'm not sure? Well, what, what it is, is the tax lien list, the county attorney's office, and now is a list. Right. A list is not always the best way to look at information. Yeah. So, we provide it in a map visualization, so we put that as a layer on our website. This is an overview, sort of thing? An overview, and it helps look at things in context, and I think for Habitat for Humanity, it really helped them, because they were able to see where these properties are located, in context to maybe where they wanted to use a property, things like that, so, a little bit of help there. So, a little bit of help there. One of the other things we recently did is we were awarded a quarter million dollar grant from the USGS for a big project that's going to be multi-agency, city, county, some of the surrounding counties and cities as well. So that's exciting. That'll be a project to capture high eleva, or high resolution elevation data called LIDAR. That'll happen later this year. Douglas County Engineers Office is a key player in that, and they'll be able to use that data. So we're excited about that, that grant that, that we wrote. And that'll be, the project will take place starting this year into next year. And then the third thing, which I'm going to show you at some point today, is some public safety bond election results analysis in the hopes that it can help with the 2016 effort. So we'll get into that later, but just to sit there. Quick org chart, not very complicated, there's four of us. One notable change, Steve behind me was promoted last year. We're still questioning that, but deservedly so. And so our org chart changed significantly as a result. Okay, this chart, this bar graph, call it the bar graph, this is what we base our cost sharing model on. And our cost sharing model is between the city and county. And we started this last year to provide more equitable cost sharing between the city and county departments based on the time we spend. So we track every hour we spend in our department, and we assign it to either city projects and, and departments within the city or county projects, or what we call enterprise, which has a benefit to both. This is the chart of hours over the past year, and it's pretty typical, similar to last year. There were a few changes, I'm going to show you here in a minute, but as you can see, a lot of our time is spent on enterprise work. Right now, we spend about three times as much on city projects versus county, but that can shift any given year depending on projects. This next chart compares last year to this year, and I'll point out a couple of changes. And the light blue is last year's time breakdown. And a couple of changes, we did a little bit less work on city projects. It's slightly more on county projects and a little bit more on enterprise projects. So again, the trend is staying fairly similar, but there are little changes. And again, that can be as a result of specific projects we may be working on. So bringing us to the numbers, our target budget of 384,922. We are proposing 384,921. I was really upset when John said he was $4. And so that number is about 80% payroll, 20% non-payroll there. And we include our fringe benefit calculations so that we make sure that the total cost of our department gets shared with the city instead of just the expenditures. And so that total number is 503,000.
And that's what we do with 911 too, we have the fringe pack.
Do we have an interlocal agreement with them?
We have a city, county, and our local.
Thanks.
So the cost sharing split is based on these numbers we've just shown you. We have an agreement, since we, our department was formed, of a 50-50 split on the enterprise cost. Forty eight pers, forty eight and a half percent of our budget is about 244,000, which makes 122,000 both for the city and the county. And then we have projects that we worked on specifically with the city and county. And you can see the numbers there. The city comes up to about 193,000, county's about 65,000. So when you add those numbers at the bottom, it shows the total split between the city and county. City's about 315,000, the county's about 188,000. This last slide is what we're proposing on how we fund that number. So we've taken that city and county share and broken it out. The city gets a grant from MAPPA for transportation projects, that's 82,000. We're also splitting between the city and county some project management fees that I'm collecting for my work in the aerial photo project, about $4,000. On the city side, they make up the other 229,000. On the county side, we get a $4,000 discount for those project management fees. And then 119,000 of our budget is fringe benefits. So that's the biggest share that the county contributes. And then we're looking for around $65,000 from the general fund. So I always try to add this in. I think we're a good bargain for the county.
I'm just getting in the queue. I can wait.
Go ahead.
Oh. No, I can wait. I just want to be.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I get lost in acronyms sometimes, but NIRAC?
Uh, sorry, I should have explained that. Nebraska Iowa Regional Orthophotography Consortium.
Sure. That's what I thought.
There'll be quiz on the.
It's a flyover, the aerial photography.
Aerial photos, yeah.
And as soon as we get it done, we start over.
We are a flyover state.
Well, there you go.
Relative to the technology on that for a second.
Uh huh.
Do we use drones at all through any of this now?
We actually did. We did a project, we're just getting started with that. And when I say we, we're contracting it. We don't want the liability of having a department, a county department fly in a drone and having something go wrong. So because it's so new, we're preferring the contract. And we did a project on the health campus on 42nd and Woolworth in September with the Environmental Services Department. We captured some high resolution imagery, took about two hours to capture, cost us about $800 compared to the hundreds of thousands of dollars it cost us in the past. It's a little more raw, it's not as refined, but it's a great supplement for what we do, especially when we have areas of change like redevelopment, or if we want to see seasonal change, things like that. So I think we're going to be doing more of that in the future to balance out our kind of anchored three-year, two-year flights. But my expectation is that our overall costs of that type of program are going to go down, and they have been. But drone technology is going to help us do that.
Sometime in the future, would it make sense for the county to acquire its own drone capacity?
Operationally, yes. I think we could have the ability to do that and find ways. My concern would be legality. Certainly, the attorney's office would want to chime in on that. There are so many stories in the media already that are mostly negative about inadvertently dropping a drone on the middle of the U.S. Open Tennis Court, you know, or interfering with people responding to a fire or flood, you know. So you hear some of the horror stories, and they are out there. So if we were to look at doing something of that, I think it would require close examination from a legal perspective.
You'd all.
I have one more question.
Mr. Rogers, you want to be next?
I just have one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And who's the current drone vendor that we contracted with?
I contracted with a company out of Lincoln. I'm blanking on their name right now. Digital Sky.
Digital Sky?
Digital Sky. They were the first vendor in the state of Nebraska to get a commercial license from the FAA. There are a few more out there now, but we're, we're still feeling that out.
Mike, when you said about liability, and I want to be sure Diane follows up, I don't want you to necessarily go into all of it, you know, to be sure that we're totally indemnified, because sometimes if I hire a guy to work on my house and he drops something on the neighbors, they're suing him and myself. So I just want to make sure Diane works with your somebody from the county attorney.
Yeah, we did that on that contract in the old campus. We made sure that the attorney's office reviewed that.
Yeah, and that we're pretty indemnified. Thank you.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes. I would have concern about owning the drones because of the FAA regulations, compliance issues, the rules and regulations. You would have to hire somebody additional just for the forms you'll have to fill out with the FAA and the compliance.
I agree with that. I think at this time, it's in our best interest, and I told this to the city of Omaha as well, that it's in our best interest to contract for those services until the industry matures, that we know more about some of the issues involved.
Hundred percent agree.
You know, a little bit off the track, I'd like our legal counsel to draw up a policy to be, I considered by the County Board to absolutely make it clear that there are to be no drones purchased by county offices, departments, or elected officials.
Okay, well, we can talk to purchasing.
Yeah, we'll let, we'll talk to our legal, which is the county attorney's office. I don't think they're in the room, but we'll talk to them and see what they.
I think we need to have a policy, because I have a feeling I know at least one department, one elected official that would like to have a drone in here right now, you know.
I mean, they could make, drones could be, commercial drones could be made illegal for all we know.
We just don't want to get in the business of having any other than what he's done. And, you know, if there's people who want drones, we need to know about it first.
Right.
That's what I want to know.
Hundred percent.
Any other questions or comments? Chris?
Are you pretty much through?
I got just a few more slides. Less than one minute.
Well, let me just put it up there, because you put numbers. I guess it was alluded to, but my question was, is there anything that the assessor's office does that you can't do?
Their GIS group. Choose my words carefully.
Well, I'm just saying, well, let me say, let me actually.
There are only two letters in the word.
Are you fully capable of meeting the demand of any challenge in the bill?
For GIS, yes. And we drafted up a proposal for doing just that. It's just a proposal.
And my only thing on that is, and I'm going to throw it out here, is, yeah, I know we can't tell them what to do, but, you know, I honestly believe we should force the issue on that and, and reduce the budget gradually.
I agree.
To phase that out and let the call be what it is, because, you know, this is a pissing match that I just don't think is worth it. And we just need to go ahead and set a precedent on it, you know.
Commissioner Borgerson?
Well, we, we've started that conversation, and the first conversation was just that, and now we know. And so the next conversation is exactly what you're talking about, is that you slowly reduce the budget and add those services to yours in the roundabout way, which is totally ridiculous in my opinion. I mean, Commissioner Kavanaugh, you were in the meeting with me. It was one that made the most sense out of all of the stuff we've talked about in terms of, one, consolidation, merger, whatever word you want to use, it makes the most sense. So I agree wholeheartedly.
They have a four-person dedicated staff over there doing GIS within the registered Ds.
Right.
Assessors.
Four people. Right.
Do they have a drone?
Don't want a drone gap here.
That takes care of your sun baby on your roof. Okay, any other questions or comments?
He's got a.
Oh, yes, here we go.
Yes, I just have a question. Your, your draw on the county general fund, does that stay pretty constant?
Pretty much. I have another slide that'll show that.
And then I guess just one other, the, the work that you have to do with the city in order to maintain the balance of cost, is that challenging at all, or does that just, does it pull out pretty easily to do that?
Because we now track time, it's pretty evident, and most of the departments we do work with, they'll question. I mean, we, I, I like to think we have a history of being very transparent and very accountable for the time. And the city also being equitable with, you know, if you use our services, you pay for our services coming through. So we haven't had any resistance yet.
I'm just thinking in terms of planning and maintaining relatively constant ratio from year to year.
And ours is constant with one exception. If we add an employee, which we did last year, it's a huge link because we only have four employees and we add three. So otherwise, our budget is pretty, pretty constant. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, anyone?
He just had the.
I just had a couple more slides.
Go ahead.
This is a detailed list of our expenditures. Just a reminder, our payroll is about 80%, about another 10 to 15% are key lines for software and server equipment. So we don't have a lot in our budget, different items, and it's mostly eaten up by those things related.
Let me ask a question. Does everybody in the room have one of these who wants one? Everybody has one of these? Okay, go ahead. Excuse me.
Sure. Our revenues, I already talked about that, but you can see on the bottom here, there's a little breakdown of where the revenues all come from. Breakdown by city departments, the county's shown there with some money from the general fund and some from the fringe, for fringe benefits. And then we also have some MAPPA money there, that is our total.
Do you have a degree in banking, finance, financials?
Just a couple of quick charts to, to kind of highlight what I've been talking about. This is a chart showing our payroll expenditures, and there are two notable upswings, and those were, we added one employee about five years ago, and we added another employee last year. Really, those are the only significant changes in payroll. Our non-payroll expenditures, as you can see, have taken a dip and steadied off, which I'm proud of. We were able to purchase some software a few years ago that allowed us to do a lot less outsourcing. So we do a lot more of that internally, yet we've gained capacity. And so that, that really had a big impact on our non-payroll expenditures, and we're trying to keep those as steady as possible. Our total expenditures just kind of echoes the previous two slides. Really, the only upswings are when we add a new employee. And then our fringe, our revenues, I'm sorry, are pretty much mimic our total expenditures. The final slide is just a comparison from last year. We do have an increase in our payroll due to a 4% increase and promotion of one of our employees, but our non-payroll declined down from last year. So that is all I have.
Okay, any, oh, Mr. Morgan?
Mike, you do a great job. I think we've talked about it the past few years. I want you to think about something and maybe make a suggestion to Joe, Patrick, however you want to do it. I know that the county assessor has a GIS part of their operation, you know. And maybe that's the way it should be, because I'm not smart enough to know that. But it seems to me that it'd be good if that was maybe done at your department, or how it could be done, and it could save us money. And I think this board, and some others could say no, they don't agree. I think this board would be supportive of seeing that take place, if we can save money and still provide the services. You don't have to comment on it today, but it's just something that you don't like to see two departments, you know, doing the same thing. We've talked about it, I think, in some of our finance meetings. So that's a subject I'd like to at least explore. Maybe you can tell us how it might be initiated, because we're going to have to find ways to save money.
Commissioner Rogers?
Mike, does your proposal, because I think the way that babies might have to be split, does your proposal include absorbing them?
It does.
Okay.
It includes absorbing their functions.
I mean, like absorbing them and the employees that come with it?
Correct, except with one exception. The GIS manager position would no longer be there. And that would be based on the retirement of that existing person.
Okay.
That's a major part of that proposal.
Okay. And I guess is ideal then, is ideal with her, are we going to take that, that one, I assume it is $80,000 or so, or $80,000 to $100,000 out, or are we going to allow her to keep that? I'm just thinking that might, is that a negotiating chip that we're going to have to use to, because if we take it, I'm just thinking we got to leave it with something.
Commissioner Borgerson?
Well, that was kind of the conversation that had to be had during these budget discussions.
Okay.
Mr. Craft?
What day is that, so I can make sure I'm here?
Did I understand you correctly, that this budget reflects the absorption of the other?
No.
No, it doesn't reflect the absorption of that.
Okay, so do you have a budget prepared for that?
I drafted a proposal before the two offices were merged.
Right.
And presented that to Diana Badiato.
Yeah.
About, probably about six months before she took office.
Okay.
And I feel strongly then, as I do now, that it's a win-win for every party involved.
Almost everybody.
Including the employees. I, I think it's a win for them as well. So I stand behind that proposal still, and it's, I think it's a no-brainer.
We appreciate that, and we agree with you, at least I do. Do you have something else?
Yeah, can you send us that before this, before we have a schedule?
I can.
Okay.
Can you send that to us?
I can.
Okay, good deal. Any other questions? Oh, does anyone know, are the, I assume that the employees that are in the GIS and the registered Ds assessors are covered by a union contract?
Yes.
Are your employees covered by a union contract? All right, well, then you can strike if you can. Okay, well, we need to address that. Okay, well, we need to address that issue as well because, well, I'm sure they'll hear from the union if we try to make some changes like that, but, uh, you know, that's kind of life. Yes.
But, I mean, again, there's a lot of upswings to this, a lot of positives to this, so I think it would be who best to stay on that track rather than, you know, some of the other tracks.
I'm just looking for a bomb.
I know.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and I just think we just gotta agree to jump off the breeze. I, I just think we had to agree to jump off the breeze only because there's no way you can rally against it. I mean, you know, you can cry, man. It makes no sense.
I mean, I think we should notify them, the union, and that's about it, you know, and then tell them what we're doing. Anybody have any other questions or comments? Mike, you're doing a terrific job.
Absolutely.
Thank you for all the maps you've prepared for me.
Hey, can I?
To the city.
Guys, one, Mike, your, the capability, are you gonna do this, the bond issue, because I wanted to ask you, what's the breadth of yours? So I'm assuming when you did the bond issue, did you draw, did you have to request that or did you have the capability to draw that just straight from the election commission's office?
I requested the raw data from the election commission.
Okay.
And I produced something to show that. I'm actually very interested in what I produce for looking at, uh, upcoming elections, so.
So, but you have capability to do that with, since we run it, we can draw whatever we want to draw.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, other question, uh, if you could?
Yep.
Uh, when will, are we gonna get a presentation of that sometime?
I was told today.
Mm-hmm.
So, do you want me to do that now or at least deliver it?
Later on.
Budget presentation.
Uh, maybe, we should probably have it separate because they didn't give a public notice that we're gonna discuss that here. We probably oughta strictly, strictly work with the open meetings law. So, we'll do it, we'll schedule it and open it to the public maybe two weeks. Yeah, it is.
It's on, it's, yeah, it's, isn't it on agenda?
That's why I included it.
It's included in this presentation.
You did not, you did not have it?
I have it.
Yeah.
Oh, you do, well.
I have the map behind you.
Anybody have a problem with talking about it now?
Later on.
Because we can continue to talk about it.
Talk about it now then.
Okay, let me just switch over to mine.
I wanted to ask you a question too, when you talked about that, uh, recent highlights of ordering that two hundred fifty thousand dollar contract with USGX for firing a high resolution light off of the wall. This is a really ridiculous question, but would you be able to see?
Because we won.
No, you can't see a lot of lines, but you can see very detailed statistics, you can. All right, I can tell you.
Let me come over there.
So things like that, you can do a lot of, uh, it, it's very useful for things like, uh, pre-surveying or pre-design, uh, work on contracts. One way it translates to cost savings is departments like county engineer or city public works hires consultants to go out and do survey work and it's hundreds of thousands of dollars a year kind of this. This data could provide some of that type of ability without this.
The reason I mentioned that to you.
Because it's our department.
It would be a public document.
Okay.
You know, if anybody asks.
Well, I'll say, when I was in charge of land records in Puyallaw County, there were two more outlines, so.
You did.
It would certainly be part of, if I had any authority over land records.
That alone is a big deal.
Okay, we have a few maps coming out here. Um, so what I've done here in summary, I have created a, a handful of maps. Actually, four maps that I want to point out, and this is an analysis of the two thousand fourteen general election specifically focusing on the public safety bond issue. Uh, the data all comes from the election commission and worked with their staff to make sure I had all the correct, uh, numbers. I wanted to present this in a number of ways so you can interpret it, uh, in any way you think is fit. Uh, and I'll start with, uh, you should have a map on here that's titled Winning Choice. Uh, this is the map that a lot of people end up looking at as a result of this election, but I also feel it's the least useful map. The Winning Choice tells you whether the public safety bond issue passed in that precinct or not.
Which, uh.
There are three maps.
Winning choice, winning choice.
Oh, he's the one. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which map is the Winning Choice?
I think the one at the bottom there.
You know, we do have room at the table.
Is it later?
No, that's not it.
Hold on.
He's kind of with his.
Yeah, somebody want to move up the table?
And they're, we're in this size because it's hard to see until precinct.
Here's more, I might have given so many examples, I'm one short.
And then it's also on the screen. Yeah. All right, so the map that's titled Winning Choice, I word precinct as the first map. Um, this is a very, very generic map. It tells you whether the, the net, the issue passed. Uh, so if we scrap right off the bat, all the precincts where it passed, um, and just look at the ones where it failed, we don't know much about them in this map. We just know that they failed there. Um, the next map that I had was a, by percentage. So this is a the percentage of, of ballots that voted against and it should be percentage of votes against.
Number of, it says number of, of votes against. There it is.
Percentage of votes against, yeah. All right, so that is a more telling map and it tells you, uh, certainly areas in red, uh, voted more than fifty, between fifty and sixty-eight percent of people who submitted a valid ballot voted against the issue. Um, the orange areas are forty to fifty percent. So right off the bat, I think you've got some target areas for, for marketing a future campaign. Um, and then you can look at the greens and yellows and those may not be as important because they, uh, had a lot fewer. So the percentage of votes against is important. I think that helps determine where. The next map, the one that's titled Number of Votes Against, my personal opinion, this is the most important one. Um, because if I'm not mistaken, the issue on the ballot lies in total numbers. So it doesn't necessarily matter by precinct, it's total number that, that voted for it, total number versus total number that voted against it.
Say that one more time.
Twenty-seven precincts voted yes and twenty-four voted no. It's more the total number of votes that matters. Um, so in this case, the previous map showed a lot of areas that had red and orange. But some of those aren't maybe as important as others to target and this map really highlights the total number. So if you look at red areas on this map, that is four hundred and forty-nine to seven hundred and four votes were against that bond. So that's the most, you know, the big numbers. A lot of people in those precincts showed up, filled out a ballot and voted against the bond issue. So instantly, you might say those red areas are prime targets, you know, to, to educate in that. Now, uh, there's a fourth map here, which is the percentage of ballots left blank. Which I thought this was also useful information. There are quite a few ballots where people went to the polls, received the ballot, submitted that ballot, but left this issue one, did not vote yes or no. So that could be a public education potential there. Um, obviously, those red areas, uh, stand out like a sore thumb. The people in those, uh, I, almost a quarter of the people who submitted ballots in there didn't vote on this issue. And I wonder why, you know, that, that's, uh, interesting.
And those red areas are not considered no votes, they're just.
They're not no votes, no, twenty to twenty-five percent in those areas voted, just left it blank.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so.
Mike, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Okay, so they, on this one, the red represents that there were, they left it blank, but then, then you go back to the ones where it said it voted against and you look at that, just use six dash two one. But there was also then there a high percentage that voted no for it, so it was either blank or no.
Right.
And so.
The combination was to.
Combination of those two.
And that's another thing, I didn't create any more maps in this, but I wanted to get some feedback first. There's analysis we could do on that.
Okay.
So if you said, well, let's look at all the places where we had a heavy number of no votes and we had some that were left blank. And maybe those, you know, priority wise become the top areas for, uh, you know, kind of public education and issues.
With the percentage of, the percentage of blanks compared to the margins out there, it still got you there. And then you're taking into account this year, unless we wax it up tremendously, that those areas that voted no, turnout was probably higher than other pieces. It's a presidential year, that turnout's gonna be a monster. And, and I'm just saying, all the trend doesn't favor, I mean, I'm just saying the curve you're gonna have to go on to increase awareness to flip them, there's, there's just gonna be.
When I looked at the raw data, um, I found in almost every case, the blank votes would have swung the vote.
Oh, really?
There were enough, yeah. So it's, it's a significant number.
But depends on how they voted, doesn't it?
It does, but I'm saying if more of them, it had, there were enough to overcome.
If they had voted the way that, in that direction, which we really don't know.
And you would have to assume since they're gonna know, you gotta split them.
Still a large number of people who left the ballot blank is the point.
Right.
Yeah. Um, I did do two other maps to show a couple of comparable elections, what staffed the election commission, and I didn't print these out because I don't want to explain. The Omaha Public School Bond Issue is this map here. Um, with both of these additional maps, I felt like the data didn't really reveal anything similar to the public safety bond issue. So this is the OPS Bond Issue and you could see overwhelmingly it passed there, uh, with the exception of some areas in South Omaha and the more, uh. undeveloped, undeveloped, right. So it doesn't really follow.
Is that area?
It doesn't follow the same pattern as the, as the bond issue did. Um, yes.
Well, yes, it does tell you something because if you were doing this in an election context, you would take two maps like this one and like that one, and then you would figure your variables. It's called your persuasion quotient. So all of those areas that are green on this map and a red on this map are gonna have a significant persuadable quotient, which are targeted precincts for people in there can change their mind. Obviously, people here voted for a half billion dollar bond issue and the same people here voted against a thirty million dollar bond issue. That's a wide degree of variability here. That's, that's extremely important.
Commissioner Rogers?
That would be, but I'm, the side factor in there is all that area northwest. And being in the room when that thing was laid out, they basically voted for the land for that school. They put a sweet spot in there that they, they don't, they wanted so bad. And that's why they left the other, they gave them the land. And if they want the other's part, if they want to build a school on it, they gonna have to vote for it. The whole bond issue was targeted. If you matched that, this map up with this red and yellow area, everything that's green there that voted yes, split the script for OPS. In the ninety-nine bond issue, they voted no. This is vote, this, they, they voted yes because they wanted that high school. If you don't have, I mean, I know we bring in the fire department and, uh, all the other pieces from the rule pieces, but if we don't give them some reason to vote yes, some carrot that they want that bad, we gonna be in the same situation.
Okay. Did you have one more map?
Yeah, well, the other map I did was the minimum wage issue that was on the ballot, uh, a little bit different, but in, it will pop up here. Um.
Wow.
Similar county-wide initiative. You know, but it's just another comparison. Um, I, I stopped there with these, uh, because I, I felt like I needed to get more feedback of what you were saying, Mr. Kavanaugh. It's very useful for me to start looking at more analysis, but, uh, this gives at least a few uh, looks at the information.
The top of the street.
Clearly, one trend is, uh, rural Douglas County doesn't vote for anything.
I work for Mike, I'm sorry. Claire, Claire's area voted yes, huh? Claire's voted yes, yeah, we did have that.
Yeah.
Gradually.
But I don't have the Douglas County West School District on here.
That's the one.
They clearly have a history of.
Well, I, I think this is tremendous information, um, and helps us as we move forward with, um, figuring out what our educational awareness building on the bond issue will be, so I'm sure we'll be in touch with you.
Yep, and that would be the next, I just assumed that would be the next step, save of the, to move into, okay, use this information to help produce some target area. So.
Okay.
Very, and I have to buy PDFs of all of this information.
I probably just reiterated your case for consolidation.
Right. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. All right, thank you. We'll log out of here, of course. Carrots next?
No. Okay, thanks, Mike, information. Next, we're gonna do, uh, adult probation.
Adult.
Historically, we've, uh, never done adult probation in these meetings, uh, as they've never had any sort of issue, uh, with, uh, their budget, but I got a call from Ron. And, you know, I just came, Ron, now, you know, I've talked to him on the phone, but, you know, Ron, we never had any issues, so I, I hadn't met Ron before, so. But anyway. He, uh, he gave me a call and said there's something on the budget that he would like to talk to the commissioners about. So he says, uh, absolutely. So we've scheduled, uh, Ron to come in and talk a little bit. Uh, real quick summary before Ron starts is that, you know, probation is one of those where they're state employees. There's not, uh, uh, county employees, but I think in adult probation, a statistic I saw there were about ninety state employees. Our, um, budget for them is a hundred and thirty-two thousand, almost a hundred and thirty-three thousand, but with probation, this is one of those where we don't pay the payroll, but we pay the rent, the, uh, furniture, the fixtures, the office supplies and things like that under that agreement that came from the state. Uh, and this year, he called me first because he's tight on this year's budget and has issues for next year's budget. So, uh, we'll let Ron talk a little bit about where they are this year and next year and kind of, uh, identify the issues for us.
Well, it's very true. In my ten years as the chief of the probation department, I've never appeared before this committee. We've always come in under budget. Uh, we've never asked for a supplemental budget. Uh, but this year, as a result of some legislative, uh, issues that have passed, uh, principally legislative bill nine oh seven, which was the, uh, expansion of the specialized substance abuse supervision, and LB six oh five, which was the, uh, adult corrections reform bill, uh, the probation office is growing. Uh, the county board did approve expansion of our buildings, uh, last fall and, uh, now we're beginning to fill them. Uh, in June of two thousand fifteen, I had eighty-nine FTEs. Today, I have a hundred and one. And they have authorized, uh, me to hire two more, uh, full-time employees, uh, this summer. Uh, one of my handouts is, uh, just basically breaks those down as far as which ones were allocated to us by legislative bill six oh five, which was a supervisor, a CBI officer, which is a high-risk supervision officer, a specialized substance abuse supervision officer, a probation officer assistant, a secretary, and a drug tech. Uh, because of the passage of LB nine oh seven, they allocated four SAS officers to our district. Uh, they gave us two drug techs and then this summer we're hiring two more SAS officers. So that's fourteen FTEs, uh, more now than we had last year. Uh, last year, we expended a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, which was about three thousand dollars under budget. Um, as I mentioned, uh, to Joe when I called him, I'm not going to ask for a supplemental budget this year. I think we can make it with the money that we have. Um, but I don't think we're gonna be able to accommodate these fourteen new employees next year without an increase.
May I ask a question? Uh, is this increase all on us?
Well, as you see here, the state pays the salary and benefits for all the employees. The county pays for the infrastructure, the paper, the pens, the desks, uh, the paperwork. And that's what we're asking for. We're asking for a ten thousand dollar increase. Uh, primarily, that's to, covered by contracted services cost increases. When we expanded the size of the buildings, that came with some additional expense in terms of damage removal, um, uh, shredded contract, our building security. Uh, when we, uh, moved from the Redmond building to the, uh, building on Seventy- Thirty-third Street, we added one secured door to that building that didn't exist at Redmond. And when we expanded Eighty-third in spring, we added two secured doors. So that comes with some additional security costs.
The building on Redmond, where was that, near Fountain Boulevard?
Forty-second Redmond.
Yes, okay, that's the one that was kind of dangerous?
That was the one, yeah, right next.
Okay, so then you were at the Seventy-third and what?
Seventy-third and Blondo.
Blondo.
Blondo. Okay.
And the final sheet of my handout basically just kind of breaks down, you know, what we're asking the money for. There was an eighty-nine dollar increase to our budget for the grant writer salary increase. My contracted services, I budgeted twelve thousand for that last year. I've already expended over thirteen thousand. I'm on track to spend sixteen thousand, so I'm asking for an increase there. And then the other is for computer equipment and support and furniture and fixture for those fourteen additional employees.
One thing I had mentioned, and I've tried to get all the departments, everybody to do. I'm not sure where any disposal company, other than Waste Management, takes their waste. Some of the companies in our area truck it to a landfill in Dayton City and from all sorts of sources. And I think the state of the law is, or could be, that if something happens at that landfill that has bad stuff in it, asbestos or mercury or whatever, that everybody who dumped anything there is responsible. So, you know, we have to be very careful, in my view, although I think I've gotten heard from attorneys that it's a fantasy. But I'm worried that in a landfill like that, so you may want to reconsider. I'm not saying chase out the company you have, but ask them where they take their trash.
Well, yeah, the building sanitation is the company that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't know where they take it.
Dayton City.
There you go. Ron, while I appreciate you, the drudgery of having to come here and ask for an increase, the one thing that I do appreciate, which I think we probably need to try to emulate or replicate, is what those costs from those legislative bills is to us. And this is good because we're able to track now the direct impact that we tried to tell the legislature when they were passing those bills, that what and how it would affect, you know, the domino effect that it has on counties. And so, this demonstration is great. I mean, I really, I really do appreciate that. And then to break it down as to what that ten thousand dollars would be used for, I really appreciate that, so, thank you.
Mike?
Yes?
I think, following up on Commissioner Borgerson's comments, it's my understanding that a component of six oh five allowed for counties to realize costs relative to the impact of six oh five to recoup some of those costs through grant application process, through perhaps the Crime Commission?
Through NICO, I think. Or through Crime.
Crime Commission?
And, you know, it would be kind of a pass-through if we could add this ten thousand or one other, you know, increased costs that we have, probably in corrections mostly, but anyplace, to a grant. I think this might be the first year for that. And, you know, so, Joe, I don't know if you could give us a kind of a view on the overall county expenditures relative to six oh five adjustments that would be recoupable under the six oh five grant application process.
It's for, I'd say it's for new programming, so it's very limited in what you can spend it on. So, you can't just do what you're proposing. It has to be new programming related to reducing population at the jail.
Right. And, which we weren't sure of, so we haven't budgeted for it, and we were always talking with Mark Foxall. We're tracking it, but at this point, there was a lot of uncertainty, was my, what I heard. But, you know, Patrick, that was my understanding, just what Patrick said.
Yeah, I think that that's true because it's new. And my conversations with people in Lincoln relative to this fund is that it's building up a considerable balance because no one is submitting applications for the fund. I would certainly be inclined, in that regard, to overask and have them tell me, no, that possibly is not a eligible amount, rather than to self-censor ourselves in our application. Our first application should be for everything that we can see that six oh five has kind of brought to our door.
Commissioner Borgerson?
Marco, wasn't there a time, it wasn't the first year, but wasn't there a three-year or whatever time? I don't know what it was. You had to wait X number.
It's delayed. I think it's delayed until twenty seventeen.
Okay, that's what I thought. We can't even ask.
Right, until twenty seventeen.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
But I will double check on that.
Double check, okay.
But it is very narrow, like Patrick said.
Is it administering that? The Crime Commission?
The Crime Commission, yeah, Nebraska, yeah.
You know, following up on that, if that is the case, and I, you know, I'm not familiar with the actual language relative to the application status of eligible dollars. We have a legislative session between now and twenty seventeen in which to perhaps edit those narrow things, to actually cover real costs. Perhaps these kinds of costs weren't anticipated in the drafting of the bill. And if we went back to them in twenty seventeen before the application window opens and said, hey, here's some things that you didn't consider when you set six oh five up, it would then be possible anyhow to widen the categories that would be eligible for grant funding.
Joe?
Well, I, you know, this is kind of the tip of the iceberg on what they've been doing. I'm gonna ask Jerry Lay to talk about, you know, we've had to go and get significant incremental new space to house different groups of probation people, and I think that's a lot more money than the ten thousand. Mike, do you want to talk to that?
Yeah, I'm on up to the table.
What's going in ten thousand?
All the space we've been having.
It's all the individuals. The big space. For example, the midtown office expanded by an additional fifty-four hundred.
Where's that?
Uh, Eighty-third in spring.
Midtown, okay.
So, you know, that's about, you know, that's about sixty-one thousand, right? I'm sorry, Joe, what's that for? Sixty-one thousand, that's for the expansion of the midtown adult probation, Eighty-third in spring. To accommodate these additional employees? Due to these two legislative bills.
Eighty-third in spring?
Pardon?
Eighty-third in spring or spray?
Spring.
Spray.
That's the spring plaza, but Eighty-third Office Center. But, but the bigger one, more, you know, the largest expenditure was the expansion from the north probation to Seventy-third and Blondo, which included, you can help me out here, another bill that required report center.
Right, right. That was only six one.
So, these are things that I pleaded before you all, talking about this is coming, but I've got costs, Joe's got them. We've been tracking them, but it's a lot more than that.
Outside offices?
Yeah.
What was the cost of that, Redmond relocation?
The Forty-second Redmond went from roughly sixty-one thousand to ninety-three thousand.
So, now it's ninety-four thousand?
Square foot, or cost to you?
So, it's an increase of thirty-two thousand?
Yeah. That's just for the one. Now, the bigger one, let's see the square footage now. Price wasn't bad, seven fifty square foot. It's right up your alley, right?
Yeah.
But the Eighty-third in spring needed a total build-out, and that's, that's where the real cost came into play here. And I think, I'm gonna say one hundred and forty-one thousand.
Yeah, it was six figures, absolutely.
Yeah.
So, the total was one hundred and forty-one?
How many square feet was that one?
Fifty-four hundred. It was a total gut.
Hundred and forty-one thousand is for Eighty-third in spring and Eighty-third in West Center, is that where it is? Is that right?
Pardon, which one?
Where's the, the Redmond went to Eighty-third and what?
The Redmond went to eighteen oh one North Seventy-third, Seventy-third and Blondo.
Seventy-third and Blondo, okay, got it. Okay, so anyway, the total cost of all this was one hundred and forty-one thousand?
Yeah, and I think, Joe, didn't we have an allowance of forty as part of that?
I think we negotiated allowance, yeah.
So, you built it out for sixteen dollars a foot, roughly?
Except we, we did get the allowance, so our part was one oh nine, is that something?
Yeah. Oh, I thought you said eighty thousand you spent.
No, I think it was one forty-one, but.
Can you give us something in writing?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have.
And they gave us some money, but we didn't have enough.
We didn't have enough.
Jim?
Okay, so just kind of trying to do a running tab here. If we do the ten thousand for the probation office stuff, and then one hundred and forty thousand? No, it's finished. We don't have to do it next time.
We're just saying, this is what we're.
It's a one time.
This is what we've spent.
But can't we recoup it under this project?
It's for new programming.
Yeah, remember that grant, yeah.
You can't, Jerry, because it's for new programming.
How do you recoup it?
You can't. It's for new programming that is designed to reduce the population, so.
I'm pulling the language.
Okay.
I appreciate that. This is new stuff.
I'm not saying you can't ask for, but that, they, this was fully vetted with the legislature. We told them ad nauseam what this was gonna do to us financially. Probation, I'm assuming, did the same. And they said, okay, fine, we're gonna put five hundred thousand in statewide, and it's gonna be for new programming only.
Okay, Chris?
So, yeah, that's what I'm saying, if we want to use it for something, Foxall needs to, that's why I was asking. If we want to use it for something, that's why I was asking Foxall to start aggravating that pre-trial number, because that's where we, that's a little.
Is that new programming?
I think there's new programming that should be done to get them out. Once they get those caseworkers, you got eight hundred people sitting in pre-trial, the new programming is how do you get those people out to be monitored?
Christian Borgerson?
But to Commissioner Kavanaugh's point, that if, if we keep a tally of what everything we're spending, it would be who must to go back to the legislature and say, this is what the law says, but this is our reality. And so, we need to take a look at your definition, or you're defining what those dollars could be used for, and say, and blah, 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 blah.
Right.
But we need the numbers.
We're telling them that we, that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is gonna break the bank?
No, 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 no. We're telling them that because of the laws that they passed, there was a definite fiscal impact down to the counties, and we're tracking it, and this is what it makes up.
We wanted to qualify for it.
And we wanted to qualify.
And you know what else? They aren't gonna care if it's a hundred and fifty thousand.
And not only that, but they told us that because of the report from the council of state governments, that we're gonna achieve so much savings by reduced population that, because everybody's going, everybody's gonna be diverted from detention. So, we're all gonna have this huge savings that we can, you know, recoup our costs and then some.
Well, we're talking to ourselves about this, you know, go ahead, Jim.
And we are, but I think that Commissioner Borgerson's on the right track. No harm in asking.
Not at all.
And these are unanticipated, probably costs of the implementation of this well-meaning program.
I doubt it. I think it was anticipated and frankly.
Maybe it is, well, why not ask?
They don't, ask them is fine, but they don't give a damn about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Douglas County. You kidding? Write a check from the big fund, your inheritance tax, yeah, the slush fund. Write a check from what they call the slush fund. I'm sorry.
I hear you.
Little cynical.
But I think that if we keep track of all of this for all departments, when we have our meetings with the senators, one-on-ones with our group, we can actually present this stuff to them and say, hey.
It won't hurt anything, that's.
No, I mean, we may, like you say, be talking to ourselves, but it's out there. They won't know unless we give it to them.
Exactly.
They won't know.
I agree, no problem, but if it were one point five million, we'd be in a better position.
It might be by the time we're done collecting the information.
Okay. He's trying to. Correct the record to one point five million. Any other questions, comments, opinions?
I understand where you're coming from.
That's the good guy.
We understand.
Right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
One more item we're gonna do today is Board of Equalization. You know, the Board of Equalization doesn't have any full-time employees. They've had their budget tons, about two hundred and thirty-five thousand. You know, they always come in within budget. It's kind of fun and loaded when it all goes on in the summer, so there won't be a supplement for it. And there's two major costs to Board of Equalization. There's one, that's about seventy-five thousand for the seasonal employees, mainly high school kids that we hire down there to do a lot of the paperwork. And then the other component of the salary, which would probably be about a hundred and fifty thousand, are payments to the referees in here, the appeals and the cases. And so, the issue here that we're gonna have Catherine Hoff speak to is an issue regarding referees pays, that we pay them fifty dollars an hour, and I think Catherine compiled some information that said they may be getting paid more than that in Lancaster and Sarpy. And.
Good work there.
Good work if you can get that one.
Good work there.
Catherine around? Okay, sorry, okay, Catherine, it's all yours.
Well, I don't have a presentation prepared. I do have copies of the report I prepared for. Patrick, if you would like a copy, I just have a few.
The probation, that's the issue.
But essentially, that's it. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that the referee compensation that issued for your consideration this year, in my research, it looks like there hasn't been an increase in compensation since at least two thousand and five. And moreover, the compensation rate in the counties I surveyed, Douglas County is the lowest of any of the responding counties. So, just something for your consideration. We pay, here in Douglas County, fifty dollars an hour for residential referees and sixty dollars an hour for commercial and ag referees. Sarpy County pays fifteen dollars more for each. Lancaster County, they do it a little bit differently. They don't have a set rate. The referees actually set their rate, so there's a pretty broad range. But the average of that rate is sixty-six dollars, which is still higher than Douglas County, so.
Are referees required by state law? Anybody know?
They're not, I don't, they're not required by state law. The protest period is required by state law, and then the Board of Equalization has the opportunity to hire referees to assist with that.
What we have for complaints last year, numbers, seventy-five hundred?
No, I think it was closer to, what is?
It was around three or four thousand.
Yeah.
I think it's come down.
Yeah, last year was up a little bit. It's been, yeah, steadily going on the third page of this report, if you've got it. I've got numbers over the last few years that correlated with the referee cost.
Well, may I respectfully suggest that the county board members take over this responsibility? First of all, I mean, the bottom line is that the county attorney is responsible, or excuse me, the county attorney told me in a written opinion that the county assessor is responsible for setting valuations. The Board of Equalization is a place where if the taxpayers don't like their valuations, the county assessor passes the heat and says, go to the Board of Equalization. And then we sit there, if we make any changes, Commissioner Borgerson and I can testify that we would reduce taxes for people, and the next year, they would be right back where they were, or even higher. The assessors will charge, this is one of the more stupid, and I'll spell that for the tape, S-T-U-P-I-D-D, stupid things that county does. We have no business getting in there, and having a Board of Equalization, it's all the assessor's deal. And this ought to be just put right back to the assessor and make them settle things. And there've been some changes. People come in and complain early, and all these things are settled. But until the assessor takes on the responsibility that she's given and quits trying to bounce it to us, I think frankly, seriously, the county board needs to sit as a Board of Equalization to forget this cost, save two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and I don't know, seventy-five thousand seasonals we're stuck with. But save the two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We need it for mental health, if nothing else, so ours and somebody else's.
You will need it after, for the mental health, for your mental health, because you definitely hear all of the cases.
It doesn't make any difference. I've done it. I wish I'd done it too.
But you can't sit individually. You did it as individuals, but if you have to sit as the board.
No, you know what the law says? You can't sit and hear your constituents.
I think it's now no, no commissioner can sit.
Show that to me, because I think it says constituents, because I did reviewing for the Slossbergs, and they thought they were my constituents, and I cut the taxes.
But they changed it after I did that.
They changed it to where the full board has to sit.
Well, then it must, then let's do the full board.
That's a full-time job. That's not a forty thousand dollar a year job.
Chris, in the early days, we used to meet individually, the board, with the taxpayers when they came in. Commissioner Kavanaugh, not this commission, but Commissioner Kavanaugh, number one, Bill Green. All of us sat there with him, and he'd come in and tell me his taxes were too high. We'd make the decision. Somebody might be there with us, and that was the end of it. I agree with Mike. I'd like to see us do it.
I agree with Mike. I'd like to see us do it as a board, if they wanna come before the board, we listen.
Claire?
It sounds great in theory, but the, the numbers are, we would be hearing over six hundred protests a day. And, well, with three thousand plus protests left, to hear those in a five-day period, which is what we have. That's over six hundred protests a day. Okay, so we give them, what, thirty seconds to make their case and we give them a decision?
Depends on when we start in the morning and when we close at night.
I, I remember how hard it was to get commissioners to show up. It was often a challenge to get a quorum, even, even to be present. And to sit there for, I mean, you can't do six hundred cases.
I'm willing to do it. I am willing to do it.
If we put, and what week is this, this occurs?
It's, it's a month.
Catherine?
It's a month.
So it's not a week, it's a month.
Well, the, it's the month of June protesters can file and now by statute they're allowed to have an in-person meeting.
When?
In June.
Yeah.
The entire month?
Well, I think we have some leeway to set up the meeting times, but the, the month in which they can protest is the month of June.
So that, it's not five days then? No.
Well, but although if you, if they have until June thirtieth to file protests, the vast majority of protests come in in the last few days of June. So you could start meeting ostensibly as early as June second, but you would probably not have very many protests to review at that point.
Well, I think we could, when we have this information public, we could say, you know, we're gonna be taking them in order. So get in early because it's like going to the theater or something. Hollinson, he may not have enough seats for everyone. If you don't do it early, you may not get in.
I think we need, we need to do it.
And tell me something else, and Diane can do this later, because I think this conversation will continue a while. Do you have to, let's say we have us all in a room, so we have the quorum, we're here. Do we have to have a quorum every time we talk to an individual about their home?
The law has changed so that you have to have a face-to-face if the person requests that. And I'm not sure, but I believe that it has to be the whole board if you don't use the referee system. And then you have to, you know, after you make your recommendation, I don't know how it would work as far as going back to the regular meeting where you have to approve these again. But, you know, just, just so it's clear, the Board of Equalization, the process of an appeal to the Board of Equalization is required by law.
Right.
Having the referees is something that is discretionary.
Have what?
Having the referees review at first is something that's discretionary.
Well, we have it in the order.
Well, there's three thousand, how many protests?
Let's see what the, I'd like, pardon me, I know there's everybody lined up, but please get us the statute to see whether we're, you know, out there in left field sometime, not this minute. But let us see what that is. We don't make a decision today.
As far as meeting with the people or overall funds?
Well, and whether it's a quorum, whether it's everybody, you know, all sorts of different little variations on the theme. Um, I think Kraft, you're next.
Chris and Kavanaugh, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris is next.
You still got the prep work. I mean, unless, unless you're gonna give Patrick four more staff, you still got the prep work, like permanent staff. So, I mean, the, the BOE is just pretty much doing the prep work. They're taking out a little bit of it, but if you do that, you still got the prep work costs and now.
So the prep work is those kids. Seventy-five hundred can go to the clerk's office.
Well, I wouldn't hear, but I'm just telling you, observing it, and I was running that year and observing it. There's no way they're gonna take, I mean, that just didn't, even if you did as a whole, the structure as a whole, the volume has increased. And that was gonna be my, that was gonna be my question to Catherine, kind of, I mean, it's a two-sided answer to the question. Yeah, Sarpy, those guys could pay more, but their people probably aren't, they probably still aren't paying, making close to total what our referees make because our referees probably see a good more than them. And so that allows them to pay more, so, you know.
Chris, when you were, when you were running, there were eight thousand or so complaints. And, and, you know, they, they came in and we split up and so come and we got them handled. We handled them all. We can't split up this time, I understand that. But if we can get a quorum, which I think is probably the basic requirement, now we're talking three thousand, four thousand. And the assessor has this pre-meeting thing set up, and I don't see what the difference is.
But that's not, that's not working. That's not working ideal.
You don't need any more staff.
That's not working ideal. That's the situation we had out north. Diane doesn't use, from my understanding of it and having explained, she doesn't use that whole full period. It may go to March, but she cuts it off in February to have it prepared by March. So you don't get a full event there. And the only thing I'm saying is, you know, people argue because you raise the salary, say you don't do nothing. You wanna do this, you better jump the salary up, because this is a whole new different.
We can't do that, Chris.
Well, no, but Mike, no, this is a whole new requirement. And I'm telling you, saying the board to do that and taking a month, at, at the low point it is right now, you're pretty much wiping off a month. And that's a month from your employer and everything else. And, you know, we complaining about having to go to the board of trustees meeting at the health center.
I don't go because I don't like it there. It should be, it should be in this building, so it's open to the public. That's another issue. But, uh, really, I'm sorry, we'll talk privately because you got the figures wrong to begin with, but I'm sorry. But who, let's see, who's next?
Catherine.
Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Okay. It's incorrect here. The proposal that we have before us for the finance committee consideration is one relative to the increase in the hourly compensation for referees. Is that, is that right?
Yes, that's, that's the original issue.
And we're at fifty dollars for residential, sixty for commercial on ag. Now, is there a proposal to where we should go? I know you mentioned some accounts.
The last page is, is not necessarily a proposal, but it's an example of what you can expect total cost to increase if you were to increase rates commiserate with other counties.
Okay, so this is a look back to last time we did it in oh-five, right?
Last time we set rates? I, it might have been before oh-five. That's the, for this documentation I could find back, that this rate had been the same.
Zero, 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 zero from those ten years till now. So even if we did one percent, it would be a ten or eleven percent increase. If we did two percent, it would be a twenty percent increase, right? Just to, just to keep it in line with the kind of cost of living, like we do with some of our employees, right?
What do you mean, if you did one percent, it would be?
If you did, okay, we haven't raised this compensation at all in over ten years. So say we had any other employee where we haven't raised their compensation at all in over ten years, you might look at a, a package that would bring them up to, you know, something that would recoup that ten-year lack of compensation increase. Like we did last December for certain employees in Douglas County. Right?
Okay.
So that proposal would be at two percent, a twenty thousand dollar a year increase to our overall Douglas County budget. Is that right? Is that what we're talking about here, twenty thousand dollars?
Well, twenty thousand, here's the challenge, is it's hard to approximate. Part of what the report discusses is because the, really, your referee costs are tied to how many protests you receive and the count, you can't, you don't have any.
We can estimate, best estimate.
So the estimate over the last five years for referee costs have averaged a hundred and five thousand dollars. Based on those average costs for the last five years, if you increase overall pay by twenty percent, you would increase costs to the BOE budget by about twenty-one thousand dollars.
Okay, so, you know, that's kind of what we got on the table here. I understand the philosophical discussion that's going on, whether we should do this one way or another. But we're just talking basically the compensation for the referees that we currently use. Being somewhere between twenty percent at twenty thousand dollars and thirty percent at thirty-one thousand dollars in the overall Douglas County budget, if we did those proposals.
Okay, Joe?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, you were re. I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, no. Jim is right in bringing us back to the budget instead of the procedure, so I'm not gonna comment. See, I do admit you're right once and for all.
So, you know, my question was, at fifty dollars an hour, which we offer, which is an option people apply for, get picked, are we finding we are having a shortage of finding qualified referees willing to come and do this for fifty dollars an hour?
In just the few years I've been doing it, I'd say the pool's been pretty consistent and we haven't lost a lot or gained many new ones. So, which is fine as long as protest numbers stay about the same. But we haven't, I don't think we've had any new, we maybe had one new referee in the time since I've been here.
So, you know, I would say, I would look at this not as contracting with an employee, but more as like fitting out there to see what, for a service provide, what a service provider is willing to do it for. And so if we could do it and hold our cost to these service providers, isn't that a benefit to us? I don't know if we have a moral obligation to increase the amount to a service provider. I think they're, they're not employees and they're contractors or whatever. I think it's a, a different criteria to look at it. So I'm not sure that keeping the cost low is necessarily bad.
Claire?
I personally, if we're not having much trouble filling these positions, I personally would like to see something less than twenty percent for us to consider. I mean, I'm willing, I, I see they've been static for a long time, maybe need to be adjusted, but I think twenty percent is too much.
Yeah, and I just put those figures as examples, because twenty percent was bringing it, that's what brings it closer to the Sarpy County rates. But fifteen percent would be an increase of about fifteen thousand dollars, ten percent, about ten thousand dollars, and five percent, about five thousand dollars, so.
Do you know, if I may, we, we raved about Mr. Friend's ability to cut expenses and do things. Do you know that he reduced the pay of the people to, on the Board of Mental Health? He reduced it. He didn't raise them. I mean, those are professional people to sit there and decide whether somebody has it all together or not. And, and Mr. Kraft, this is, this is a budget discussion, because we're deciding, I brought it up because I don't think we should budget it at all. We should take back our responsibility and frankly, we should be hiring fewer referees because if these numbers have plummeted from seven and eight thousand down to whatever you said, three, three thousand or something. I mean, and giving them a raise? Oh, my God, absolutely not. Absolutely, we should do what Friend did and cut them. You know, that's how Friend got his budget looking like it is. He didn't give away twenty and twenty-five percent increases to the Board of Mental Health. So, PJ?
I'm for seeing if we can just hire them, fifty bucks an hour, see who wants to work, period. And if they don't, then we'll deal with it at that point. Now, if somebody wants to bring a resolution to the board and give them whatever, then we can all vote and see what the majority does.
Mr. Kraft?
Okay, I'm gonna ask my question. Patrick, do you have any idea how much additional burden our staff would have to do to do in-house? Number one, before you answer, just think about it. I'm not qualified to set a property value or change a property value. I'm not, you know, I can't tell the wheat from the chaff, the emotional plea from the factual pleas, which is why we hire professionals. Having me appraise property will be like me having diagnosing Mike with a, uh.
Mental illness.
Mental, thank you.
I thought I'd say it because you were thinking.
Actually, I was gonna mention need, probably, but I like that better.
Yeah, I know you.
Okay. But yeah, you know, our skill is not in setting targets, and that's, yeah.
You know, if I could respond to that, you know, the law was set up and it imploded when we were, when commissioners were not showing up to hear these appeals. And I got the reputation of flying through things pretty rapidly. And so I had all sorts of commercial stuff. I got Schlossbergs, they had, they brought in a court reporter, we're gonna get sued, so the, you know. And the assessor was there, the World Herald and people. And so I flew through their things and I asked, all their buildings, and I asked the assessor, what do you think? And he said, this is what, we think what should be what it is, and I said, I don't agree, and I would say what I did. And of course, the World Herald did a big story, said that I reduced their taxes by seven hundred and ninety dollars in fifty-four minutes. And there was an editorial, and then, then, what's his face, he didn't even have it right. He said that he got a bill introduced and passed, he said, you can't, you can't hear the appeals of your own constituents. Schlossbergs are not my constituents. So, I mean, and then he asked me if I was influenced by the fact they gave me a contribution in nineteen eighty-one when I ran for mayor. And that's when I told him, I'm not for sale, I'm not even for rent. So this is our responsibility and we pass it on to the referees because we were forced to. But I think if we go back and, and act as a full board or a quorum, whatever is required, and do this ourselves and start as fast as we can, there's no additional burden to our staff. We have these, these employees from the assessor's office or the county clerk's office preparing all the. The difference is they bring us the packets and we do our job. Chris?
Look, they don't wanna say it in good conscience, that is burden.
What's that?
They don't wanna say it in good conscience, that's burden.
What's the burden?
No additional work to the staff, that's burden. That's the point I was making before. You can cut them out. Somebody gotta do the prep work. And if we are thinking, well, we do the budget right here for two months and we can't keep everybody here then, so you think for an intense month period of headaching stuff where you're not an appraiser and you have to concentrate that you're gonna keep everybody, that's just a pipe dream. That's not gonna happen. It sounds good. It's not gonna happen.
We had all seven commissioners here until two of them just left the room a few minutes ago.
Okay, and, and picture that with increased intensity for six weeks.
But they can go to the bathroom and stuff, whatever, they'll be back, watch.
Then we just gonna shut down county board business for two months too, because you have to do everything you have to do.
You're making this totally, you can do it during the county board. We don't have to have board meetings all the time, some of the.
That's what I'm saying, so all the other business the county board does, go.
Okay, how long do we spend a day?
Okay, so this at the same time, okay, and then you gonna start Board Equalization next month and you gonna do budget hearings at the same time.
You know what? We've never started budget hearings until Kathy Kelly left. We never had any budget hearings. I was a commissioner, I got, I got, wait a minute, Chris, I got patted on the head. Kathy went around and got four votes for the budget. Steve Walker.
I know that, I was here.
No, you weren't.
Yes, I was here.
Well, then you were part of the good deal. I was on the bad end, because I didn't get to participate. You're making me angry now, because I remember this very, I was very angry about it.
Well, that's fine, we had the debate, but that's what I'm saying.
I was very angry about it. I'm sitting in my office, Steve walks in and Kathy, and I started asking about more help for, for the social services and literally I could feel this, we don't have any money. And I got nothing from that budget. And that's why I insisted, when PJ and Claire, I asked them, open this up and let's have discussion. Open discussion to budgets, which we finally have had the last few years.
And that's my point. You got the budget like you wanted. And to do the BOE, you're not gonna be able to do it like you want to do BOE and do the board at the same time.
We can, we don't have to. We can change. We have to be flexible. We don't have to do the board. Look at today, the consent agenda. How long was it? Nineteen, twenty items? We don't need all this. We don't need all that. We could, we could skip, we go to skip two meetings next month or three meetings.
I just want them working the show. At some point, you gonna come back and say, yeah, you were, I think about that.
Okay, let's just try it and see if we do that. Let's do it my way and then I'll, I'll come back and I'll crawl across the table and apologize to you if I'm wrong.
Okay, I'll be ready to see.
Mike?
Um, just for clarifications, the, all of us together, and the meeting started when I was chair.
What's that?
When I was in charge of the committee. Uh, it wasn't PJ and Mike.
Okay.
Yeah, PJ and I.
Okay.
Okay.
Claire?
The, the last year that we did it as commissioners was a, a fiasco.
Yes, it was.
It was a circus.
It was difficult.
And, I mean, I, I remember meeting with one constituent and, and giving a modest decrease. Another commissioner coming along and redoing that neighborhood and crossing out my figures and my signature and putting in, she raised the valuation of this taxpayer after I had told them it was being lowered. She decided to raise it, doesn't tell me, doesn't tell him, just slips it on through. It was a fiasco. We, the volume is overwhelming. I don't believe, I, I, I think just the sheer logistics of the entire board trying to hear this many cases, you, we're gonna have to be flipping them through in thirty seconds and people aren't gonna be saying, gee, this was, I, I appreciate the audience. We're not gonna give them the time they deserve.
Well, I'd like to do, before we do thirty seconds, I'd like to do a real time analysis on this of some sort. Considering we're working long hours from, you know, seven in the morning till seven at night, whatever it takes, including Saturdays, it can be done. And I think we have an obligation to do it. We're talking about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We could use the money elsewhere. Yes.
Commissioner, I completely understand where you're coming from, but when we can't get commissioners to come to meetings other than on Tuesdays or come in other than Tuesdays, there is no way, back to Commissioner Rogers' point, that you're gonna get the full board or quorum of the board, if we needed, to come in for a month and sit from seven to seven Saturdays and Sundays. I'm just, I, I get where you're coming, and the reason I get it is because I don't, I didn't like having to go to the referees. Commissioner Rogers, or Commissioner Duda didn't like to go to the referee system. But the reason was, is because physically, there was no way to get through. Now, the numbers have reduced and I'm sure there can be a time study done on how you would be able to get through three thousand or four thousand of these. But I'm just cautioning that when we have people complaining about how long our meetings are now, having to come in other than a Tuesday now, we're gonna have problems.
Okay, all I'm saying, before you, you made the worst case scenario, I don't blame you, because you're opposed to it. Do something that really spells it out. I mean, how many, how many do we have? How much time, you know, what days, and we're not gonna do it Saturdays and Sundays, not gonna do it from six AM. Not gonna do it from six AM till midnight, all this kind of stuff. And we have to see whether it's a majority, or, you know, whatever it is. Let's just look at the data, and if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. We hire these people and blow the money.
Chris, NACO, best practices. Is there any issue on this with the...
No board, I mean...
Is it all over the board?
And no board sits all over the board. And no, no board sits at the full Board of Equalization. If they do, they are full-time.
Yes, they do sit, because there's counties that go themselves, county commissioners and supervisors that go themselves to inspect the properties. It was like, you do what?
That was my caveat. If they do, they are full-time, and they have the staff that Patrick staffs, and each of them have three staff to their own. So I'm just saying...
Well, there's actually Nebraska county commissioners and supervisors that go and inspect property. Honest to God, it's like...
Which, if I could just finish that, that was my point. If you go that route, you are, you are, you are elevating a full-time commission.
Let's not even look into it, then. Let's just keep doing it, because we've always...
No, I want to look into it.
No, 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 let's not look. We've always done it this way, so let's not consider anything that might work. Really, let's just do it the way we've always done it.
I wanna look into it, because I wanna see you, I wanna see you symbolically crawl across tables.
You got your marching.
One, one last point to leave, is that, yeah, they're down to about five thousand, and they've come down a lot. That's because property values have been flat to down. And if we have a year where all of a sudden, these property values increase five percent, it's right back up where it used to be. Nobody's been coming, because their taxes are flat to down. Soon as they go up, they'll all be here again.
Boy, I'm telling you, doomsday, I love this. We oughta write science fiction stuff. Doomsday, oh my God.
I would like to also figure out how we can track, because of having those preliminary hearings pushed on us, how much that has reduced the Board of Equalization, uh, numbers. I know that when the previous assessor didn't really fully utilize it, and we're starting to utilize it more, but I would like to, to follow that, the tracking of that.
Let's hear some homework and get back to it, and we'll figure out whether we're gonna do this or not.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
When can we get that information back?
Next year.
How does he keep speaking? If I said that to him, he would talk to me again for a year.
Who, me?
Yeah.
Oh, come on. We're over it.
I guess this committee today is adjourned.
We are, we're...